Yep, I mean she's just, she's got a good story and she understands. It's, it's a great.
Drink.
Yes. Oh, I'm thinking water.
In that order?
That's all I drink.
All right, good evening. It is about 7:01 and I'm going to call to order a special workshop meeting of the Newmarket School Board. And we'll start this meeting as we do all others with our student representative Caitlin leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One of the things that we, um, in our retreat last June talked about as a board was sort of looking at reworking our, our two times a month, every other week, school board meetings. And so we decided to have the first meeting of the month be a business meeting primarily, and then the second one be a workshop with some business added in. And tonight is our first workshop of that type. And we have invited, um, some professionals from, from our special education team to come talk with us. And Erica, if you would make the introductions and proceed when you would like to.
So I'm Erica McNeil, I'm the Director of Student Services.
And you need a microphone.
Yes.
Um, Erica McNeil, Director of Student Services, and I brought Lori Carmichael, who is a speech pathologist in the district. So I thought I'd first go over with what is special education. And the definition is specially designed instruction to meet the unique needs of a student with a disability. So to dive a little deeper into that, specially designed instruction is adapting or changing as appropriate the content, methodology, or delivery of instruction. And a child with a disability is one that is aged three through 21, but has not yet received a regular high school diploma. We have a number of regulations that we follow. They run through a number of series. Um, we start with identification, child find responsibilities, which is our district's obligation to find students with disabilities and provide appropriate services. That also comes in the form of referrals. Anybody can make a referral and that will come to the school. Then that would move into evaluation if appropriate, and we would determine eligibility, develop an appropriate IEP if a student is found eligible, and then determine their placement. Then we continue to monitor each year.
And how old do they have to be to be referred?
Uh, they can actually start at two and a half. We actually begin that process even sometimes a little bit earlier. Um, students who are receiving early supports and services, which is birth through age three, we receive, receive those referrals about seven to eight months before they turn three. So we have a referral meeting at that point. We usually wait to evaluate just because of their age and the developmental milestones that happen between those eight months. Um, but we do have an obligation to, if a student is requiring special education at age three, have them evaluated, determined whether or not they're eligible, and have an IEP in place by their third birthday. And anybody jump in with questions along the way? Um, we have 13 educational disabilities, which are listed here. A number of those are much lower incidence than others. When we do make a determination on eligibility, that's after the evaluations are complete. We sit down to review the evaluations and use that data to determine whether or not students are eligible. To be eligible, they must have a disability, but also require special education, which is again, that specially designed instruction, for special education and related services to benefit from their education. A student may have a disability, but not qualify for special education because of that impact for the specially designed instruction. They may be eligible for accommodations under Section 504.
Erica, can you just briefly talk a little bit about what an evaluation process might look like and how the team decides what evaluations it might conduct?
So within each one of those disability types, there's a requirement for specific evaluations. So if you are looking at a student and your concern is that their speech and language may be impacting them, you'd be doing a speech and language evaluation and an academic, because each one of those are determined by the laws that we operate under. If it was specific learning disability, then there's specific evaluations. So that's why knowing what those concerns are and knowing what areas that we're concerned about will then help guide us to determine the appropriate evaluations for each student. And each one of those evaluations must be completed under each one of those categories for us to make that determination. Um, we also will meet minimally every three years to go through that redetermination process, um, which usually means we're reevaluating them. And that means that, you know, in two years, if we see things are looking different, we may want to take another look. We can evaluate then, but we need to do that determination at least every three years.
And who's involved in those meetings?
So every meeting will have the parent involved, a regular education teacher, a special education teacher, an LEA, which is typically an administrator, but can be, that can be determined. I could say Lori needs to be the LEA. Um, and then other service providers as appropriate.
And when you say as appropriate, that would be if the child had already been assessed, it would be those who are providing services or are called on to determine those services?
So if it was, say it was an eligibility meeting and we had the school psychologist do some of that testing, the schools, that person would come. Um, if a student was a speech and language identified student, the speech pathologist may come. Um, sometimes you may have somebody invited from outside, a doctor or another provider. So it really kind of can depend, but the core team is going to be reg ed teacher, special ed teacher, an LEA, the parent.
And the child.
And when they're of appropriate age. From determining whether or not a student is eligible, we then move into developing the IEP. The IEP needs to be meeting our regulations for what is called a free and appropriate education, which some of that is pretty straightforward, right? Free, we know that means at no cost. Um, but the appropriate piece can be where we need to make some of those professional determinations. Um, and then after you've developed your IEP, you look to do that in the least restrictive environment, and that's where the placement comes in. But that's done after the IEP is developed. So free and appropriate, meeting all of our regulations, what we would determine here in Newmarket, plus all of our laws. It's free to the parents, and it's provided in accordance with what is listed in their IEP. And least restrictive environment is that to the maximum extent possible, we educate students with students who do not have disabilities. And there are special cases, of course, where we're either pulling a student out or they may be educated in a different environment, but we have to have a reason for that, and we need to outline that within their IEP. So, some of the Newmarket numbers. Uh, looking at our five-year numbers, um, our total enrollment, SWD, students with disabilities, and then what that percentage is. Our preschool students are included in that percentage because there's not the regular education piece to offset the percentage. So our percentage, actually if you do the average, I think it was 15.59 if you go over all five of the years. And that's right within that state average, which has been 15 to 15 and a half over the last five years. And then also included our preschool numbers, just to also make sure, you know, we're encapsulating our total number of students with disabilities.
So 13 kids graduated last year, and that's why it's 19177?
It's not always graduation. Sometimes when we do those reevaluations, a student may no longer be eligible for special education, or there's also move in and move out. And that's what we hope. Our job is to make sure students get the services they need and no longer need the supports and services.
And usually the parents would be in agreement with that?
Yes.
You, the IEP's gone, parents would be in agreement with that?
Yes. Yep. Parents are involved throughout the entire process.
What's the process if a parent doesn't agree with that?
There is dispute resolution through the state that can start with a mediated meeting where maybe they bring somebody in just to be part of our meeting. And that can move all the way up the process to potentially due process, which is where they, there's a, somebody who sits and oversees and both sides will present their sides, and then that person would make the determination on where to go from there.
What's the time process for that?
It can take time, um, and it also depends on the schedules for the state and where they're at with their, um, with their staff on whether or not, how they can get those scheduled. It can take months.
But the initial meeting happens within seven days, I think, or seven to 10 days. You have to hold your initial dispute resolution meeting or. And does that child receive services till that is resolved?
Yes. So students will remain in whatever program or placement or service provision until that's, that process is completed. Uh, disability by category, so I just did a comparison between the New Hampshire averages and our averages. Some of ours are very similar to where the state is, especially on some of those lower incidence disabilities, um, like, um, deaf and blindness, deaf, visually impaired, um, brain injured. Our numbers are very similar. Autism is also way over on the left. We're very similar to the state average on autism. We are, we have a couple areas that are not exactly right on, but every community is different, and that's why there's averages. Um, like our speech is slightly higher, but our specific learning disabilities is slightly lower. And our emotional disability is lower, as well as intellectual disabilities, but multiple disabilities is slightly higher. These are just good things to keep an eye on so that we know we're not over identifying specific areas. Um, and the Department of Ed does track us on that kind of data.
What's an example of a specific learning disability? Because I can sort of understand deaf and blindness and speech and language things, but what about specific learning disability?
So that is a student who has, um, something within their cognitive processes. So they may have a working memory issue, or they may have a processing speed issue, and that then impacts them academically. So they may then have only certain areas that that's impacted. So some students are, um, may only have issues within reading, and so they'd be identified as specific learning disability with reading comprehension or reading fluency. Um, so there's specific areas that then we measure that from. Gender statewide, we are at 66% male for the state of New Hampshire, 34 female. And in Newmarket, that's just a little bit tipped, but not outside of the average range, really. We're at 37 female and 63 for male.
Any ideas why that is?
In Newmarket or generally?
Just generally.
Uh, nothing hard evidence. I don't know if Meredith has heard anything different. Um, but there is sometimes, uh, males can be over identified, even within specific categories of disability.
And there's a lot of theory about sort of readiness for school and, and school expectations versus, um, typical gender stereotypes around need for movement or activity levels or sort of impulse control. And boys tend to outwardly display behavior more, stereotypically, than girls. Who tend to internalize their behaviors more, which often results in more referrals and more identification. But it's, to Erica's point, there's not necessarily a neurological difference that's been shown across the board.
That's a good way to explain it.
Staffing. So in Newmarket, we have 16 special education teachers. They also are called case managers. We have an average caseload of about 11.13, but that can really range between even a low of five students up to 16 students currently. Um, when we have a number of like five on a caseload, we're working with higher need students who have much more service time than when you're looking at a caseload of like 16. You may have more students, but less service time per child.
Do they specialize, or is it?
So we do have some that specialize more in specific areas. Um, most of our teachers are able to really content drive across. Um, but we do have a couple of teachers who focus more on higher need students who may have more medical needs and, um, physical needs, or even autism, which we'll get to in a little bit. Para professionals. While we're budgeted for 45 paras, which would be a three to five, currently we are still hiring and in that process. Um, but our ratio would be one to 3.5 for the 45 that we have budgeted. Related service providers. We have three speech and language pathologists, 1.4 FTE occupational therapists, two school psychologists, a reading specialist, a social worker, behavior specialist. And then we also have contracted service providers. So we have a teacher of the deaf, a physical therapist, and BCBA, which is Board Certified Behavior Analyst. That brings us to.
Do you want to introduce Lori, or did you already?
I'll reintroduce myself. I'm Lori Carmichael. I'm a speech pathologist for the Newmarket School District, and I've been in district for over 25 years. And I'd like to talk to you a little bit about related services, which is the label that we use for occupational therapy and speech pathology in the schools. The American Speech and Hearing Association and the American Association of Occupational Therapists provide guidelines for us for how we provide services in school settings. As you know, occupational therapists and speech pathologists work in hospitals and rehabs, but the school setting provides a different set of guidelines for us to follow. The guidelines help us implement the tenets of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. And we are part of delivering a free and appropriate public education for students in the least restrictive environment. We do that for students who have disabilities that impact their communication, their motor, or their sensory systems. Currently, our district employs three speech language pathologists, and we serve students from preschool through high school. And we have 1.4 occupational therapists, also serving students from preschool through high school. Do you have any questions about that so far? No? Okay. Um, our related service providers provide services through participating in child find screening, and that's where we are obligated to try and find students who have disabilities. Student study team levels meetings where we work with students who have not been, work with teams with students who have not been identified yet, but maybe we can provide suggestions for teachers for things that they can do in the classroom that would help prevent students from being identified. We also perform evaluations. We develop individual education plans. We provide therapy. We monitor student progress, and we consult with teams. We support students with a wide variety of communication, motor, and sensory needs that impact their ability to access the regular education curriculum and to participate in school routines. Our speech language team provides services for approximately 110 students from preschool through high school. We evaluate approximately 80 students per year. We do screenings for 30 students a year, and as well, we provide consultation to teams across all the grade levels. Our occupational therapy team provides services for 60 students per year. We evaluate 35 students, screen 10, and provide consultation as well. Our service delivery model ranges from consulting with classroom teachers and educational teams. We integrate services into classroom, which is called push-in. You may have heard that term. We also provide services for students in small group or individual sessions outside of the classroom. And we integrate services for students into other educational settings. For example, for occupational therapy, if a student has a disability that impacts their motor skills, they might push into PE and help support the student in that area. Our goal is to develop and support communication, motor, and sensory skills in order to help students who have disabilities access the regular education curriculum and participate in their school routines. And that's what we do.
Thank you.
When you have an IEP team, who is on that IEP team? Like if you're looking at a student and you're trying to come up with that educational plan, who's on that team?
That would be the regular education teacher, the special education teacher, the parent, and again, the related service providers who are working with that student.
And then together you, you come up with that plan?
We develop the plan, yep, with the families, with the teachers. So it's a team effort.
And isn't there parent input for the evaluation process too?
Yeah, so if there are specific questions that even a parent may bring up, I'm wondering about this. That's something that then the team considers and looks to see if that would be appropriate.
So this, um, I think you said about 80, um, evaluations?
Evaluations, yes.
How, um, you may have said this in your presentation, how are those referred? Are they typically from the teachers?
Um, we have a process, but a referral can come from a parent. It can come from a teacher. Sometimes physicians make a suggestion to a parent that they should bring a referral to the school. Um, and then there's a process that we follow. We meet to determine whether or not the referral is appropriate. If the team, including the parent, feels that it is appropriate, then we would move forward to recommending evaluations that would make sense for that student. So how are we doing here in Newmarket? So the Department of Education measures us on a number of what is called indicators, and that's required under IDEA. So the indicators are listed here. Anything from graduation rate, dropout rate, to parent feedback, which comes through the parent involvement survey. Post-school outcomes also comes from a survey, and some of it is data that we upload, like our preschool data. We track our students and that information is uploaded. So if we take a look at how, what our indicators have told us over the past few years, um, our graduation rate is above what the state average is. So in, this is our graduation rate for students with disabilities. The state has set a target, which is where they want everyone to be, and this is where the state is actually functioning across the entire state. Um, so graduation rate, we are doing better than the general state. Still kind of working in that direction, and we're going to have to keep an eye on that to make sure that we still continue to keep that rate up there.
Just make a note, Erica, that the 1617 data is the most recent available statewide data, which is why you'd use that for comparisons?
Yes. It's, the data is always at least a year behind, sometimes a year and a half behind on the official data. Um, so 1617 is the most recent published data.
Erica, is 78% from the 1516, is that just that population of students that caused the reduction in the number?
It could be that cohort of students. Um, it could also be that students took additional time to, you know. So each cohort can be different that way.
And our numbers are small enough that one student could be 10 to 12%.
It can really sway, especially in the high school numbers. As I said, the, the goal is to really make it so that we're not needed anymore. So our numbers at the high school level are substantially lower than what our numbers are in elementary school. Our hope is to identify kids early, get them those supports and services they need, and then be able to fade so they're as independent as possible. And our numbers do show that. Um, there are some years where we might be graduating three students who are, who have disabilities at that point. Dropout rate is good. We haven't had dropouts in our population. State assessment data, so we're tracked on how many students actually take the state assessment. Um, we do have some students who are medically unable to, and doctors will sign off that they are not able to do that test. We also have students who may not be in school, so they could have been hospitalized for a period of time during the assessment time. So there is times where students aren't taking that. But we want to make sure that in general, um, our students, which is here for reading, are taking it with the reading target and what the state is looking at. And then math is on this side, our district participation, the target, and where the state is at. At the second portion here, that's our proficiency level for students with disabilities. We measure it against the proficiency rate of that grade or that cohort. So if we're looking at, again, our district, our proficiency rate, the state target and where the state is functioning, so 19, we're in the range for the state. And then we drop a little to 15 here, but then we jump up to 25% of our students being proficient in reading. On the math side, the state and the state target, that 13.29, we are functioning at 12% proficient, which is below where we would want to be seeing that, and then we have a jump again that same year to 18%. So these are going to be numbers that we continue to watch to ensure that we're providing the appropriate supports and services to students so that we are getting students who are proficient.
And just there, this is a piece of data that we've talked about in, in comparison to all of our students, and this is a cohort group that we look at, but if you look at that 25% proficiency in reading, for example, that compares to about 73% in terms of our overall student population. So that means, you know, we aren't doing as well by our students with disabilities as we're doing by our student population overall. So those are the gaps that it's part of our job to close and working with our students with disabilities.
So we want to continue to see our rate increase. School age placement, so this is information that is taken from the placement information from our system. As we talked about earlier, we are trying to educate students in the least restrictive environment. So we're tracked on a couple of different ways. The first is being inside the regular class 80% more of their day in regular education. The state target is right around that 73%, and the state is functioning within there, but we are not. We are functioning at about 50% of our time in the regular education setting, above that 8% of their day. So again, this is going to be something that we're looking at.
And could that be lack of parents as well, if you don't have the support, the one-on-one?
The placement should be based on the IEP. So if they've made those appropriate pieces, it's about what percentage is out versus in. So that's based on the appropriate IEP. So it shouldn't impact that. People are making determinations that students need to be pulled out of the regular classroom, much more here than in other places.
Well, what is, was it, that can be interpreted many different ways, right? Do, do we have any ideas why that might be, or?
Uh, it could be people think that if you're providing more service, that's better. But we also want to make sure when students are pulled out of their classroom, there really needs to be a reason because the, the research will tell you that they need to be included with their typically developing peers and having access to the general education curriculum as much as possible. Of course, there are times where we have to pull students out for services. Lori's not going to work on a specific oral motor goal in the middle of a classroom setting. However, we need to make sure we're looking at that so that it is appropriate. The next section is students who are in the regular education setting, less than 40% of their day. So those are kind of the two ends, right? Above 80% and less than 40. The state target is that we're, you know, right around that 8%, and that's where the state is functioning. And we have students out of the regular education setting, up to 17% of their day.
Or 17% of students.
17% of students.
Up to, yeah, are included for, yeah.
Um, and then the last is also in separate schools, out of district placements, homebound residential facilities. The state, 2.7. The state, two point six one, and the state is operating within that wheelhouse. And we've seen an increase up to almost six percent of our students being placed in and out of district placement.
So in category B over the course of three years, there's a pretty big swing there.
Yep.
Can that, again, be for the small number? Do a handful of examples throw that off?
It can.
Or is it truly a trend, or?
It can, it could be that there is a certain population that those few numbers, but really, that's looking over our entire population. And I believe right now, I think we're at like a hundred and eighty-eight students identified currently. So the range should be shown within all of those students. So we're not looking at a, we're graduation rate, we might have three students graduating that year. We're looking at the entire population with these numbers.
But that last category could be significantly impacted that way, because those are serious ones, if you had one child who was hospitalized, am I?
Yep.
I don't have glasses in the seat far.
Yep, it's separate school, residential, or hospital bound.
That would be significant, and it would, and those percentages would be.
Yes, especially where we had, you know, point six one year, and then it jumps to six. So that can sway that way.
So Erica, when you look at this eighty percent versus forty percent in all those things, are those things assessed annually when the IEP is reviewed with the team to determine modifications that were appropriate?
Yep, so once your IEP is developed, you're then determining placement after that. So every year, we're relooking at that, and that can happen also sometimes mid-year. We may have to look at a change during mid-year. There could be class changes even at the high school that may change some of that. But this is, in general, what it looks like for those three years.
Now, those annual reviews come up based on the date those children were identified, so they're not all going to be the fifteenth of September. They're gonna be twelve months from the time each individual child was identified?
So for this, it's the placement of that year. So it's right now, if we're looking at the placement information, it's preschool through twelfth grade and what this year looks like. So where are students placed this year? But then, of course, it's a year behind, because that's, once the data is collected, we get it reported out a year afterwards. Preschool data is data that is tracked and uploaded into the system. This first set of information is looking at our social-emotional growth for students in preschool. So we get baseline information, we progress monitor them, and that information is uploaded. And then the state makes determinations on what our data looks like. So in the first section, it's students who have made substantial social-emotional gains from the time they were identified to the time they exited preschool. And the state target and where the state is functioning is right around eighty percent. And we've tracked nicely to a hundred percent of our preschool students making substantial gains in their social-emotional and knowledge of. I'm sorry, when I hit ahead, I jumped a slide. This is the social-emotional. So eighty percent is there, but our district has gone a hundred to eighty-nine percent, still above the target and where the state is functioning. And the second is, if we're looking at closing those gaps, seventy percent of our students are exiting preschool with the same age expectancies, social-emotional-wise, that their typical peers are. So that's really great growth.
So the first category, how do you determine whether you have social and emotional gains? I mean, substantial, I guess, was the word. How do you, is there a set criteria for that? So every district's compared on apples and apples?
So there's two ways that we can monitor that. The state determines that we have a couple of ways that we can monitor. We use the AEPSI system. And I couldn't tell you, do you remember what it stands for? Can't tell you exactly what it stands for.
It's like preschool indicators.
Yes. And it goes into what is called the POMS data. So there's only two ways that we can, I think the other one is a something curriculum is what it's called. So districts have a choice of these two ways to measure, and it's a standard measure. And we use the AEPSI to make that determination. That information is uploaded, and the state determines what is substantial and what is closing that gap. So we don't get to find out until a bit after, and we get to see the data and we see it, but.
I may be jumping way ahead, but does any of these outcomes or data affect funding?
For these, it doesn't affect funding in this way. However, if we are found to be deficient in a number of these areas, they can go to the, they usually start with technical assistance, which is, you know, professional development. They wanna bring in education for our staff members. But then it can go up to holding IDEA grant funds.
Holding them back, you mean?
To repenalize that way.
This is the early literacy one, sorry, then I jumped ahead. So state target's around eighty percent. Students who are making substantial growth from the time they're identified in preschool to the time they're exiting, ninety, up to a hundred percent of our students are making substantial growth. Of the students who then are measured for age expectations, the state is looking at about sixty, sixty-one percent, and they're functioning slightly below. We've gone from a fifty-five to an eighty percent of our students are exiting, meeting those, you know, five-year-old expectations for early literacy and other skills. Again, great growth and a great way to kick off those early services. Parent involvement, so this is a survey that is sent out to parents. There's an NA because they went to doing the survey every other year. So we've got one year where we don't have data, but to go back, the state target is to have thirty-six percent where parents are feeling like we have included them and that is helping their students make that growth. The state is functioning thirty-five, forty-one, and we're above that at forty-six percent. So that's great, parents are feeling a part of our process, that we've included them, educated them, and that they feel our students are making their growth.
So like for fifteen and sixteen, it's, call it, round it to fifty, so one out of every two parents?
Yes, but we also don't get every survey back.
Okay.
So, and there's different, there's a number of different questions, and then they correlate that to that. But we do send out a number of surveys, and it's also how many are returned to the state. So we do try to promote that in the newsletters. We've done phone calls saying, you know, remember, you're getting a survey. Even some, you know, if we see parents, you're gonna be, this is gonna be coming out and trying to make sure that people return that. For good or bad, it's good to get the feedback. Timelines, our specific steps that we have in our process also come with specific timelines that we need to meet. At the district, we've met our evaluation timelines a hundred percent, that's what the goal is. There's a little wiggle room in the state average, but we're hitting our timelines a hundred percent of the time. And early intervention, which we talked about earlier, about getting those referrals, you know, at two and a half or even a little bit earlier, that's our requirement to ensure that students who are receiving those ESS early supports and services, sorry, that those students are referred. We evaluate them, we determine their eligibility, and have an IEP in place by the time they turn three. That way, there's no gap of service.
How do those early intervention folks find out about that so that they know to get their children to you by whatever? Because I've talked to parents of, you know, pre-three-year-olds, and because they taught that age group, I'm like, yeah, talk to your pediatrician, do what, you know, before they're one year?
Yep, because it starts at birth, really, is that, that's when those services are available. I agree, there's not, not every family is accessing those. This timeline is specifically for families that are accessing. We have what's called an inter-agency memo between our area agency to ensure that this process occurs. And as I said, we get those referrals pretty early. It also lets us know what students are coming, what the numbers are that we're looking at. It doesn't give you the whole picture, because sometimes people are referring at age three, separate from ESS. But it does start that process.
Is your question, Ingrid, though, how do people in that zero-to-two range go about accessing services? So it can be through your pediatrician, or it can be through the area agency and getting contact with them. And ours is local county services.
Yep, so our area agency is OneSky. They contract out with Richie McFarland Center, who provides ESS services. And there's a central intake right on the OneSky website that you can call Central intake and get any of that information.
I think that information's also on our website. And DHHS has that information available as well. And most pediatricians' offices should have that information closely.
Thank you. Funding, so special education accounts for approximately twenty-eight percent of our operating budget if we look back the past few years. And the special education department revenue has been fourteen point five percent of our expended funds. That includes special education aid, which is catastrophic aid or CAT aid, Medicaid, and our IDEA grant. So last year, if we look at that numbers-wise, it was about seven hundred thousand dollars that we brought into for revenue. So those revenue sources offset the cost of those funds, of those expenditures. So to go through each one of those a bit, the Medicaid to Schools program reimburses, at this point, about fifty percent of eligible costs for Medicaid-eligible students. So it's not all students, it's students who are eligible for Medicaid. Special education aid or CAT aid, there's a formula we use. So we are responsible for a hundred percent of the costs, up to three and a half times the average cost per student. From the three and a half times to the ten times, the state is responsible for eighty percent. However, that is all dependent on what the state budget is. I would say, over the past ten years, that's been closer to seventy percent that we've received reimbursement-wise. And then the state reimburses a hundred percent of anything over ten times. So if you have a student who costs over ten times, we're paying that first three and a half. We're getting that seventy percent from that three and a half to ten times, and then we get a hundred percent from ten times on.
In the subsequent fiscal year?
Yes, it's all a reimbursement. So we're spending the funds initially, and we're getting reimbursement after we apply for those funds. So if we look at just those two over the years, this is what the reimbursement has been in those two categories. Four hundred and fifteen and a seventeen, eighteen for those two. Then IDEA grant. So we've, this is entitlement money, and so that's given to us, and then we write the grant to apply for those funds, and that's been our funding. I also put in chapter four oh two. It's not a reimbursement or a revenue, however, it's a funding source for students. So students who are in court-ordered placement, where DCYF or the Juvenile Justice, a Chin's petition, if they're responsible for a placement of a student, and we have that student also in and out of district placement, we're responsible for three times the average cost. And then, once we've gone through our steps and our documentation, we then will send the bills that are beyond that to the Department of Education, and they pay those bills. So while it's not a revenue, it is a source of funding for students who are in this situation. So what's next? Preschool. So in March of twenty seventeen, the New Hampshire Rules for Students with Disabilities was changed and updated. Many of our rules were very similar to what they were previously. One thing that did happen in those rules was the continuum for placements for preschool was changed. This is, that it really cemented the least restrictive environment for our preschool students is in what's called an early childhood education setting. And what that means is that at least fifty percent of the students in our preschool classroom are typically developing, non-disabled peers. And then, under the fifty percent, are students with disabilities.
And this has been the best practice model for a long time. So it's something that the state is sort of catching up to at a policy level, but it's something we've been planning for in our additional preschool classroom since before the building project.
Yep.
My mother was doing that as a head start teacher probably fifty years ago?
Yeah. And that's why I said it really kind of cemented that, because it has been really on people's radar, and people have been moving towards that. And so in preparing Newmarket for that, this past year, I established a preschool leadership team. And we came together, and I partnered with the Department of Education and RACE 2K, who provide free technical assistance to districts to look at our preschool and really evaluate from top-down, everything that goes into operating a preschool program. From that rubric, we then identified the areas that we need to work on, from anything from curriculum to administrative structure to the actual physical environment. So we just had our first meeting, I think, this week? Again, this week, so we're going into year two with that. But we'll continue to work on all of those areas we identified in our plan, and we might form some subgroups if needed to continue that work and bring back to our leadership team. Least restrictive environment, we saw from that slide that we need to take a look at what we're providing for our students to ensure that is in the least restrictive environment. This is a slide that I actually think most of you saw during budget season last year. This was part of my presentation then. But that we saw even within our data earlier, our students who are out of district, that number is increasing. When you take a look at the students and their disability type, sixty-two percent of the students who were placed out of district had a primary coding of autism. So that gives us, so what do we need to do with that? So we explored options last year about what we could do to better serve our students with autism. And we just began the Newmarket AVA program, which we're calling the Discovery Center. And that will serve not only students with autism, but students who respond to an AVA approach, which is.
Applied behavioral?
Yeah, sorry. Chalking for a long time. And so we're really starting that now, but our hope is to better serve that population and others who respond in that methodology.
And do you have a certain room that you're doing this in?
We have a classroom, yep, in the elementary school.
In the elementary?
Yep.
Not the high school?
Not at the high school, although there is other programming at the high school available as well. The hope here is that if we're providing those services early for these students, they won't need a separate program by the time they're getting to those ages. Again, the hope is to really provide those services so that we can maximize independence and their performance.
Like, that's the nice thing about a small district, two schools, three schools. We're able to track that.
And with that also comes professional development for our staff. Starting a program is great, and expanding preschool is great, but we have to provide the professional development for our staff to ensure that they're meeting our students' needs. Last year, we really focused on the special education process to really ensure that we were moving through our steps in a consistent manner across the entire district. This year, we've moved into supervision and use of paraprofessionals. In those regulation changes in March of twenty seventeen, there was changes to what paraprofessionals were to be doing in a school environment. And that supervision piece is not always, doesn't always come first for teachers. So providing some PD to ensure that that's appropriately done. Also, we need to continue to look at what is the least restrictive environment for our students. Again, the program is going to help, but we need to ensure that we have a good understanding of that. And also looking at our interventions to ensure that we are closing that gap for students. Questions? Or additional?
This is very helpful for me.
In terms of closing that gap, I think I thought the percentage was fifty-six percent or something. That was like the biggest disparity, I think, of all your slides. Is that a result of sort of cultural, the way we do things here, or have done things here?
I think that there's something called annual growth, which is, you know, if you're at a second-grade level, but you're in fifth grade, you get to third-grade level in a year, but we haven't closed that two-year gap. And so something we have talked about is it's not just about that annual growth, but we have to provide catch-up growth, which is further closing that lines. Because if we keep going like this, we're always operating at a gap. We need to, you know, have it be more like this. So we're looking at that as well. That's information that, you know, we talk about, we look at, but look. That's information that, you know, we, we talk about, we look at, but looking at the interventions, you know, often they say the best way to do that is to, if you're in a group of three, you may need to decrease your group size. If you're providing ten minutes of service, you might need to provide twenty, so you have additional practice with that skill. So, looking at how we're providing those services to try to meet those. And I would say we are doing that, because we do have fewer numbers up at the junior, senior high, especially in the high school levels. We've closed some of those gaps, and that's why we have fewer numbers at the high school level. Those students have been discharged from special education that receive those services, but it's still something that we need to continue to look at, because every student is different.
Could we get that slide presentation? That'd be great.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you, Erica and Lori, for coming.
Thank you.
To help us in sharing this information. I think we've all, I can pick my fill, so I've learned some things tonight, so I appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
I do have a quick question. Wouldn't, to have the students come back to the school, if we were looking at out-of-district placement, we have to look at the size of our school?
Absolutely.
And the ability to spread those children throughout the school and give them the education they need. So, that could be a lot of why we place them out of district as well, we're so limited in space.
And I thought some of the same part. I mean, even the autism program, a year ago, there wouldn't have been that classroom available. So, it's, you know, it's not that some of that is, you know, purposeful. It's sometimes it's infrastructure and ensuring that we have the space for those, for those programs.
We would love to hear, you know, about the growth of that program and the successes, if obviously were appropriate, but I think it would be exciting to hear how, once you've had a year or so, and hear about how it's going.
Absolutely.
Thank you again. Thank you very much. Now, do I need to call to order a special business meeting? Can we just go with it? All right. I will seek a motion to adjourn the workshop. No, I don't have to. So, I seek a motion to
We're just calling to order.
Oh, just calling to order.
Workshop's closed.
We're closing the workshop, and we are opening our special business meeting. There's one item on the agenda, and Greg, if you would like to come and talk about that, now that I've taken seventy-two motions and seconded them myself, we can proceed. With our approval of food service equipment purchase.
Good evening. So, tonight, we need, I've supplied you with a package for food service equipment bid that we had placed out to a competitive bid process. Relatively disappointed with the overall results of what we got from vendors. We had commitments from several vendors saying they were going to bid it, and the feedback we got after that was that it was too big of a project for me. There's nothing I can do for, about that. We actually received two bids. One was at the, and these are sealed bids, so they have a certain date and time that they have to be delivered. We received one bid prior to the date, and one was an hour and a half after, which we had to reject the bid because it didn't meet the requirements of meeting the sealed bid time. Thus, gave us another little fun challenge to deal with, because we had no particular, really a comp to see is the number right or wrong. As we went through our due diligence for this particular project, or a part of the project, we also noted that several of the items that were in our original package that was provided to us by our architects and their consultant needed to be readdressed, which caused us to do some rework with the low, apparent low bidder, a low qualified bidder, and again, I say the only really qualified bidder, to address some of these needs. And that's where we kind of get into some of the changes in what our pricing structure came down to. And I'll just quickly go through, we did receive the two bids. Alternative Sales Corporation of Kingston, New Hampshire, and Johnson Lancaster Associates of Clearwater, Florida, noted that Johnson Lancaster and Associates of Florida is also the same company that did the design work for our architects, as well as providing us with the original cost analysis for the project. Their bid came in late. It was also twenty thousand dollars higher than the actual, the Alternative Sales Corporation. During our process of doing our due diligence, we had to do through this, we noted several things were missing. Point of sales units, which were listed on the plans, listed as an equipment, but no specifications or details were actually provided. The Hobart mixer at the elementary school was talked about to be reused. It does not meet any kind of standards, doesn't meet OSHA standards, and we're actually regulated under the Department of Labor, not OSHA. It doesn't have any of the safety guards, it's forty years old. It really, it needs to be taken out of service. I said over forty. We also had a simple item as casters on the ovens were not included in, in the scope. So, we couldn't move the ovens out to be able to clean behind them. So, we added those in, it was a small cost. And doing some more due diligence, we found out that the milk supplier that has the state contract that we engage with has to provide us with milk coolers at no cost to us. So, we were able to remove that item from the cost projections that we had. So, our initial bids came in at three hundred and ninety-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty-two dollars and eight cents. And then, the other one came, our low apparent bidder was three seventy-nine oh forty-one. As you can see, those are both higher than our original estimates that we received from Johnson Lancaster for this particular project. When we got done going through all of the due diligence and figuring out we needed a Hobart mixer, and we needed casters, and we could get a milk cooler credit, and we didn't have any of the point-of-sale stations included, our revised amounts came to four hundred and twenty-three thousand nine seventy from Johnson Lancaster and three hundred and ninety-five thousand three oh nine from Alternative Sales Corporation. Again, we're being over the original estimate from Johnson Lancaster obviously puts us over more of the estimate, because we had to do the due diligence of trying to make sure everything that we were getting in there. After we did that, I did a memo to you that talks about some of the clarifications and what we did. And so, I had a second memo that went out that hit kind of five different points. The first points were that the original design information that we were provided with did not include the POS stations. The POS stations are four thousand sixty-seven dollars each, and there's a total of four, which brings it into sixteen thousand two sixty-eight. These are stainless steel carts with shelves and built-in cash drawers, and I did provide a cut sheet to Meredith at the last minute, because we were able to get that in. The item number two was talking about the milk. Well, that gave us an eight thousand four hundred and sixty-dollar credit, which was really a nice thing to see. The Hobart mixer was an interesting one, because the Hobart mixer at the high school is getting replaced as part of this. It wasn't at the elementary school. So, we had the pricing for the Hobart mixer, because it was being bid as part of the high school. Well, it's the exact same mixer we need in the elementary school. So, we were able to take the two bids we had, even though one was disqualified, and utilize those fees to say, okay, we need to put a mixer in there, and this is what it's going to cost. The other item was the casters, and you can see that, it was a three hundred and twenty-two dollar expenditure. It's, it's pretty small in the, in the, in the scope of a project, of this. And the last item we, we worked on is, we met again with the food service director and their staffs, and they really wanted to make some adjustments to some of the hot and cold serving wells to better suit the needs of what they actually do. It resulted in a hundred and forty-nine dollar credit. So, that's how we got to the bidding levels that we were. And then, on that same memo, it shows that, you know, we, original bids, three ninety-nine and three seventy-one. Adjusted pricing, once we made those corrections, and how that broke down. So, at three seventy-one, three forty, we had the POS stations, the credit for the milk coolers, the added mixer, the added casters, excuse me, and the hot cold wells. And so, we ended up with the three ninety-five, three oh nine, is how we ended up to that price at the end. We're asking to move forward with this, and, in, in this project, for several reasons. We need to move forward now, because we have to be able to provide shop drawings to our contractor in the next couple of weeks, because they'll be pouring the floors, and if we don't, they don't have the shop drawings, they won't be able to do the underground drainage and water piping, and without that, that delays their ability to actually pour those areas, which need to be done.
Does the three ninety-five, three oh nine include the POSs?
Which one? The three nine, the three, the adjusted prices?
Yeah.
The three ninety-five, three oh nine is with the POSs.
Okay.
And the mixer?
And the mixer. That's, if you look on page two of the second memo I sent, what's that? Oh, they don't have that. I apologize, I didn't know that.
I have the first one and the third one, but I don't
Oh, so, there's another memo. I was all excited. Okay, so, here's how that breaks down. We had the original bid of three seventy-one, three forty. We had sixteen thousand two hundred and sixty, sixty-eight dollars, which are for four POS stations. We have a credit of eight thousand four hundred and sixty dollars for milk coolers. We have an add of fifteen thousand nine eighty-eight for mixer at the elementary. We have a three hundred and twenty-two dollar add for casters for the ovens. We have a credit for the hot cold wells of a hundred and forty-nine, which comes up to a price of three hundred and ninety-five thousand, three hundred and nine dollars.
So, for the POSs, I mean, it's a small dollar difference, but the, the bid document, or the bid memo, has it slightly less than the sixteen thousand dollar number you just mentioned?
Yeah, because when we went back and said we have to separate the, this out, because we wanted, because it wasn't included at all, we asked our original vendors to come back with numbers. And we also felt it was important to get a third number for more comparison, since we actually had to drop the Johnson Lancaster's bid originally. So, what we ended up doing was asking them to send us adjusted costs.
I have a couple of things to add. So, Greg, Greg and I have talked through this at length, and Lisa as well. And I don't want to forget to make a note about a comment that I received from a member of the public today. But one of the pieces in my mind, when we projected for this project, we did not include that mixer. In my mind, that's replacement equipment, that's an operating budget expense, it doesn't belong in the bond, and that's something we would need to deal with irrespective, so I would not include that in this price, although realistically, that may be something we act on sooner rather than later. The second thing is the POS systems. Currently, we have two. One cashier station at the junior, senior high, and one at the elementary school. Realistically, based on the number of students that we're serving, I don't see us doubling that. There is a possibility at the elementary school, as we consolidate lunches, that we might need more than one station there. But for right now, I think we would be well-served just to purchase two of those. And again, that's a decision, unlike the rest of this project, that's a decision that I could feel could be made later in the process, so.
Meredith's right, we do not have to buy the POS today, it is a rolling cart. That is not, and I'm oversimplifying it, but it is a rolling cart.
It's a much more, it's a much better product than what we're currently working on, which are essentially our plastic carts with rubber wheels that we roll around that do not have locked drawers and those kinds of things. So, I do think they're of value to us, but I think that, you know, given the constraints of the project, that we would be better served to purchase the necessary pieces now. We have a responsibility, one way or another, to replace that mixer. To me, if we've identified it as a safety issue, that's a safety issue we should be addressing out of this fiscal year, not putting that into the project, so.
And unfortunately, I cannot make the existing mixer compliant.
You can't buy the safety guards for those today, fifty-year-olds.
No, that, that needs to be addressed.
I think, well, they are exactly as, as quick as we can.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'll be working with Lisa on that.
And so, the, the only other note I wanted to share, I did have a member of the public retweeting today just to say, in their opinion, the district should reject all bids and start over, since they were over budget. I will say that, you know, as Greg pointed out, we had an estimate from one of the bidders, as it turns out, early on in the project of three seventy-five. We're coming in at three seventy-nine, given escalation and, you know, things that, that happen over the course of time. A four thousand dollar difference to me is not a compelling reason to delay moving forward with this purchase, because if we delay, we're going to incur additional costs, because it's going to hold off on pouring of the foundation floor, where the cooler needs to be placed, and, and there will be other things that, that spiral from that, so.
They have to ensure that the, say, your drain for a given piece of equipment is where it has to be, and it'd be really bad if they poured it based on the design that's sitting there, and we have a completely different piece of equipment going in.
And moreover, wasn't some of the feedback when you started that some outfits didn't, simply didn't want to bid on this?
There was some outfits that, A, it's way too big for us, and B, that they felt that some of the detail or information that was provided by Johnson and Lancaster wasn't accurate to give them a proper bid for.
So, so the number we're getting to here, everything in there was properly put out to bid, correct?
Yes, we made a bunch of adjustments as we threw, and then, like you said, we did the due diligence after we received the bids, went line by line by line by line to make sure everything is correct. It, it, it wasn't a simple process, and there's a lot of work that had to go behind this.
When was the ad put, when was the RFP put out?
This RFP went out over a month ago. And as all, as all of our RFPs, we advertised it in the paper. We actually sat and called all, a lot of the big equipment vendors. We were actually, one of them that we, is a big equipment vendor, uses bids on a lot of them actually, did not bid it. And their, their bidding reason was they just, they couldn't do it right now. So, we, we called, I think, six different large vendors, put an ad in the paper, contacted our usual construction digest and the Dodge reports, and sent it to all of those, and really tried to get as much as we can. And we had actually commitments from a couple of other vendors, hey, we're going to send in a bid, and they just never did, which is, you know, unfortunate. And now, we're in a situation where we really have to get the shop drawings out, or it will potentially delay the project in areas.
What's a normal, like, what would a normal RFP go out? Is it always thirty days, more than thirty days?
Typically, what we do is, we, we put on an RFP, we give a two-week period that it's advertised and on the market. That's the standard minimum. This particular one, because of the complexities, we went longer than that. So, typically, we'll do a two-week. Once the RFP is written, then we put it out for two weeks. But again, it does depend on complexity. We, we also know, in a case like this, there's a lot of parts, it's a lot of money, and we want to make sure that we give them enough time to ask any questions. So, in a case like this, we also put a deadline for any of your questions. So, if you've got a clarification question, you have to have it in by a certain date, and then we'll answer it to all people who requested or took out the bid package. So, in a case like this, we did it over thirty days. Something like, we got, well, we have one we're working right on now, is for radios, that will eventually come in. That is also one of those long-term type bids that, because it has a lot of questions and a lot of complexities to it. But if I'm bidding out furniture, chairs and tables, we'll be in a shorter bid period.
And you're saying a shorter bid period is two weeks?
The shortest will ever, at least I will ever endorse is two weeks. Anything beyond, shorter than that is just not, you're not going to get the penetration into the market for results from people bidding it.
So, what would, is this person saying to you, that it doesn't feel like it's due diligence, didn't feel like we did our job, or?
I expressed that the person said they felt that they were overpriced and beyond the budget, and so the district should
That we could do better?
In their opinion, yeah.
I will tell you, the company that bid it, that is the low qualified bidder, is known, known as one of the most competitive out, out on the market. The only thing that I think you could do is, is look at it and do value engineering by going piece by piece, finding, you know, instead of the Atlas, you might go with a global brand on this. That might save you two, three hundred dollars here and that, but we're going to end up delaying, and I can't honestly tell you how much money that could or could not save. I might be at the end of it going, yeah, we saved two grand.
So if we look, if we take what Meredith said about purchasing the mixer now, which again, I think is a good thing, given the safety...
A hundred percent supportive of that.
And then the POS, is that going to be a budget item as well? So that, when we...
No, my recommendation would be that we just hold off on the POS until later in the project so that we have a budget...
POS is part of the construction project, so it is a listed item. It just didn't have the information and details necessary, so we have to build that after the fact.
So if, and I'm not doing the proper math, but that would take from that three hundred ninety-five thousand three oh nine, sixteen thousand two sixty-eight for the POSs and fifteen thousand nine eighty-eight for the mixer.
Correct.
Wish I don't have that new figure.
That's about thirty-two thousand, give or take, off the top of my head.
So that brings it to less than the three seventy-nine? That can't be...
Three seventy-five. You would take the three ninety-five and subtract about thirty-two thousand, so you're at three sixty-six-three, give or take a few pennies?
So it is...
So it's below because I don't think it's a credit cooler?
That's below, that includes the credit for the coolers because we're not going to buy them.
I was just saying, that's...
That's why I put it down below.
Your original submission was three seventy-nine, so that's why I'm questioning removing those items that you added that brought you to three ninety-five, how it's...
Yeah, the only two items you're going to have that I would recommend is the POS and the mixer. You still want the caster adds and the hot well credit and the milk cooler credits. So if you start off at the three, three seventy, three seventy-one, three oh four, then take the deduction for the coolers, take the add for the casters, take the credit for the hot and cold wells, then you'll have your number. And again, I could add it up with a calculator, I suppose, but...
We don't have memo number two, so I'm looking at memo one. It said, alternative sales submission was three seventy-nine oh forty-one.
Which...
Not include the POS or the mixer.
But the credit is there for the milk coolers.
Okay. Okay. So it would need the caster wheels.
It would need add, would you need to add the caster wheels?
Which is three hundred and twenty-two dollars.
This is three hundred and twenty-two dollars, yep. So like I said, I think it's, comes out to be around three, three, it'd be around three seventy, I guess, is, you know, I can do hard math, but...
Is it worth writing that up to a copy machine with, and writing those on so we can look at it?
I certainly do that if you'd like.
First, or I can...
Want to adjourn for five minutes?
Do you have memo two? Because I'm looking at memo one.
Yeah, memo one doesn't have, doesn't have the milk cooler credit.
Okay.
Okay? So number two is that one.
Okay.
Oops, wait a minute, it should be, let me give you all the pages for it. Yep.
Yes.
Sorry. Yep.
So three seventy-one, three forty, plus three twenty-two.
Yep. Credit of one forty-nine. So really, it's a hundred and fifty dollar add. This is taking the original without the milk coolers, so...
Right. And then you've got the milk cooler credit.
Yep.
So...
So it's...
We'll pass this down quickly. Three seventy-one, three forty, minus eighty-four sixty, plus three twenty-two, minus one forty-nine.
Like I said, it was a fun ride trying to put this all together. But to give you an idea, this is the file that we just created on that bid.
So by my math, that's three hundred and sixty-three thousand fifty-three dollars.
Sure.
And you were recommending that contingency amount for installation?
Yeah, for unforeseen issues that are going to come up.
Sorry.
Yep.
Through that process.
Yes.
Again, that's money, we don't use it, we get it back.
We, it's, we don't even touch it.
It's already in our budget.
I'm just...
So that brings the total to three hundred and sixty-eight thousand fifty-three dollars, which is below the three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars...
Correct.
...we originally had budgeted. And so our recommendation is that we approve, that the board approve that amount.
Correct.
And that doesn't include any POSs, but includes the mixer?
Does not include the mixer either.
No mixer.
No mixer? Okay.
It includes a mixer at the junior senior high, but not the one at the elementary school with the...
Yeah, there's only one mixer in that, not two.
Replacement, in short term.
Which is operational, right?
Which is currently operational, but with...
No, no, I'm safe.
Comes out of the operational budget?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
The, the, we'll address the mixer immediately. And then the POS, we're going to do a little bit more due diligence on the POS, work with our food service director and see, do you need one station or do you need two? And then I'll be back in front of you with that.
Honestly, as a parent, I'll be putting on my mom hat, go to that lunchroom in the high school during first lunch, you need two. It would actually get them going through there because it is packed.
I think there's also a staffing issue that goes along with that, too.
Okay, you would require doubling our staff, which would require some additional outlay in our future operating budgets. So again, right now, I would say that's not an expense to add on until we make that determination.
Well, that's a different story.
And keep in mind, these are rolling cards that we can add.
Right.
It's not, it's not something that's a hard fixture bolted in where we have to have all kinds of...
Probably buy it and have it in a few days or a week, right?
I guess at this point...
To buy this?
No, to, those cards, they're just...
No, it's still a four to six week lead time, something like that. We have some stuff that's eight to twelve weeks right now.
I mean, the kids have survived this long, they're going to be fine.
I seek a motion at this point to approve the food service equipment installation and adding contingency of three hundred and sixty-eight thousand fifty-three dollars.
Some of ten, you believe the numbers.
Three hundred and sixty-eight thousand fifty-three dollars. We have a motion from Ms. McKenney, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Kinnison, is there any further discussion or questions needed? Hearing now will lose the vote. All those in favor of approving this, but this item, say aye.
Aye.
Approved.
Thank you very much. I know it was quite a bit of information there.
You're working without that second memo, so...
Ah, that did make it a little more difficult.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
All right, the next thing is, yes, yes, but I want to do this calendar question about a non-meeting. On the bottom of our agenda, which I can't find right now, which is right here, it has our next school board meeting on October the fourth, which is our regular business meeting. We, as you guys know and as the public knows, we're in the process of negotiations with the teachers. And we met today and it was suggested that we have a non-meeting for the school board to sort of review where we are on things and, and move forward. So the question becomes, when are we going to have that? There were suggestions to have it in, after the building committee meeting, which is on Tuesday, or another option would be next Thursday.
So Tuesday the twenty-fifth?
Tuesday the twenty-fifth or Thursday the twenty-seventh. And if, if we are all going to go to the building committee meeting, we would just have to have it be a combined meeting so that that's posted properly prior to that time.
So it's the twenty-fifth?
The twenty-fifth.
It has a building committee five o'clock.
So should, could we say six o'clock? Or we just come for both meetings if you so choose?
I'm good.
And Greg, can you do the six o'clock on the twenty-fifth?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think you just mark, mark both up if it's not a huge deal, just...
Yes.
A quorum shows up for the building committee meeting.
I think that's, it's better to err on the side of caution that way. Um, yes, Meredith?
It'll dry. I don't have an admin assistant this week, but we will, I think it will.
Okay. Um, so we'll have that and we'll take it from there. Anything else that anyone has that I have forgotten to discuss this time? Then I seek a motion to adjourn the meeting at eight seventeen PM.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Kinnison and motion, a second from Ms. McKenney to adjourn the meeting at eight seventeen. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.